Pull this out. If you pull it again, that's because you take it right back to the same thing.
It locks softly off. Gives me a warning to yell at them. You have like seconds.
Can I go back and talk to him?
No. It's set when we start in seven thirty or we're starting right at.
Erwin, Ryan is joining the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Aaron, will you call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Daley.
Here finally.
Here.
Mr. Aaron.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Here.
Here. Um, out of objection, the agenda will, um, is presented. I will, a motion to approve the minutes for the council regular meeting on September twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve our second minute. Second.
Mr. Daley.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
And we can, uh, I will accept a motion to approve the minutes from the council work session meeting on August sixth of twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve. A second. Yes.
Abstain.
Same.
Yes.
Mr. San.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Abstain. All right. That one was slated. We had to make sure we had the right form to approve. Um, so tonight, uh, for everyone that's here, uh, this is our work session, so it's a public meeting, but it's not open to the public as a reminder, so we don't do visit everything. Everyone that is going to speak tonight, um, is an invited guest. Uh, so at times it may look like we are interacting with the crowd, but that is a nu- nu- nuance for the individuals on the agenda to be spoken with. So just so everyone's aware, um, moving right into discussion items, concept plan presentation, um, work order about the Pulte group would go first.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. It's great to see you again. Um, happy to be in front of you. Um, I know the mayor has kind of seen this already, and so I apologize to her because it's got bore her a little bit. We're gonna go through the same presentation we went through the planning commission. Um, this is kind of a really unique opportunity for us, and I've got the screen up, uh, behind you, but.
Justin, can we?
Unfortunately.
We're having to turn and not look at. We are.
It's a, it's okay. I don't, I don't mind staring in the back of your head. It's, it's quite fine. Um, the, um, the property that we have, we actually have two properties side by side on Converse Huff Road with two different builders, and they're kind of working, uh, a little bit together to kind of go through this process at the same time. So it's actually the same team, um, working with both, uh, builders on both sites. It's gonna be the same engineer that's working through both. And so you're gonna get to kind of see these in tandem, you know, uh, generally as we go through the process. Now, the zonings might be filed, might not be filed at exactly the same time. We haven't worked out the timing yet, but, um, you know, we're, we're trying to kind of present, uh, both of these to you tonight. So I'm gonna start with the Pulte project, and then we'll move into the Arbor Homes project. Uh, I think everybody's familiar with Pulte Homes, what they do, uh, the quality of what they build. Um, so this is the first of two sites. Um, this is a site, um, so these are the two sites on, uh, Converse Huff Road. So the site in white is the Pulte site, and that's the site that we're gonna be discussing in this presentation. The site outlined in red beside that is the Arbor Homes site, and we'll be discussing that next. But you can see essentially how those two things kind of tie together, uh, right there on the south end of the city. Um, so this is the Pulte site, and it's relatively open. Uh, there's, there's a farmhouse, a farmstead on it right now. Uh, there is a, a, um, kind of electric easement that kind of runs, uh, north and south through the property. Um, but the property is kind of a, in a long L shape, and we've got a lot of frontage, uh, on, um, Converse Huff Road. Um, the site itself is primarily open. There's a few areas there, you know, we've got a few existing trees on the site. Um, and we've got the, you know, existing farmhouse that's gonna be removed, but primarily the rest of the site's open. Everything generally drains kind of from the west to the east, uh, as you go down, uh, both, across both sites. So the concept that we put together ultimately is a single-family development, um, and this is a mix of, um, fifty-two foot and sixty-foot, uh, lots. Um, we've got approximately, um, two hundred and forty lots, so that's a density of two point seven seven units to the acre. And we have about twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, plus twenty-five, um, acres of open space, uh, which is about thirty percent, uh, thirty percent open space for the development. And one of the things that we've kind of tried to do with the layout, number one, we've got a number of connection points that we have to meet. Um, there's a, there's a connection to, um, the project here, uh, that's ultimately, we don't have those plans kind of shown, but there's a project there. There's gonna be a street stub connection there. There's gonna be a street stub connection here. And then we're gonna have, uh, a connection between the two projects, kind of on the north and south. And then we've got kind of the existing, uh, connection that we're making up here. And so, you know, connectivity from a street standpoint, we're making sure that these neighborhoods are connected up. We're even connecting some of the path networks, uh, into this development, uh, kind of making a cross connection there, uh, between the open space of that development and this development. The other thing that we've really tried to focus on, kind of with this plan, is trying to, uh, arrange the site in a way that we get kind of open space, a lot of houses kind of viewing on open space, trying to create open space, you know, in the middle, um, and, uh, create open spaces around the perimeter. So that if you're in a, you know, um, a lot of these houses, uh, buyers of a lot of these houses are gonna view out, uh, onto open space. Very few areas where we actually have lots that are just going back to back. Um, and, you know, the, the kind of intention behind this development ultimately is, um, you know, kind of the, the typical, um, are we somewhere in the four fifty, Jim, four hundred?
Oh, the.
Yeah.
The high fours.
High, so neighborhood's gonna be in the high fours, um, you know, uh, nice, uh, single-family homes, um, and, you know, considerable amount of open space. The one challenge that we do have, and kind of the one of the things that we did here at Planning Commission, uh, the mayor mentioned this before, was we have a lot of frontage on, uh, Converse Huff Road. And so, um, it's really difficult for us to, and, and we can, we're gonna continue to look at this, but it's really difficult for us to navigate not having any lots kind of backing up to that road. Just because we've got like twenty-seven hundred, it's over a half mile of kind of frontage there. So for us to just have a single loaded road all the way across the frontage is gonna be really difficult for the product to manage. So one of the things that we've tried to do, you know, as you look in this, is we've tried to kind of minimize some of that with the design, you know, where we, you know, you can see some of these areas that's just start to move away, and even in here, you know, we're, we're starting to move away from the road. And then what we're gonna have to do as we go through and, you know, uh, work out through the zoning is we're gonna have to come back to you with a little better picture of exactly how we're gonna mitigate that, uh, whether we can make some changes to the site, or, you know, whether we can do some extensive mounding and screening, and, you know, we can do some modeling of that, some three D modeling of that, show you what it's gonna actually look like, uh, you know, to, to make sure that we're not creating a situation where you're just kind of staring into, you know, people's backyards. But, you know, we understand that that's, that's pretty important. So from a site plan perspective, it's, it's really just that simple. Uh, it's a nice site. I think it lays out very well. I'm gonna let, um, we have a lot of architecture, so I'm gonna let, uh, Jim Hills with Pulte kind of talk a little bit about the product and their intention. Um, and then, you know, you guys can, can ask some questions. We can talk about it a little bit, and then we can move into the Arbor presentation.
Good evening, uh, mayor's member of council. Appreciate you having me here. My name's Jim Hills with Pulte Homes. Uh, I'm gonna run through the architecture, but a couple of points, um, with the site plan I just wanted to follow up on Gary said. Um, we, we really like the site plan in that none of the house, there's no houses backing up to each other, um, so it is unique in that regard. And the, the shape of the property does lend itself to that. The one thing you won't see in one of our communities is, um, while there would be opportunities to put paths behind homes, and we, we don't like paths behind homes, that privacy is a premium, and when you put a path behind a house, uh, it takes away that privacy and does, it takes away that premium. So, um, uh, you will not see any of those open spaces have paths with, run directly behind the homes. I know there was talk, uh, about the path running along Converse Huff, um, and that would have to be coordinated, obviously coordinated with all three properties as we go forward. Um, so I'm gonna run through these, the, the architecture here. There's two different series of homes, and, um, I'm gonna start with the series that runs from twenty-one hundred and twenty-six base square feet to over three thousand. Gary, how do you do this? So just, I'll run through these real quickly. We are building these homes, um, in about five or six different communities. This particular. Big fat fingers. Three different series around Columbus, Delaware, Sunbury, Hobets, the city of Columbus. So it's a pretty popular s- series. The next series I'm gonna show you are same width home, they're forty feet wide. We're building these homes, these homes are being built at Pioneer Crossing, uh, not far from here. Um, and these range of tw- almost twenty-four hundred to, uh, almost thirty-three hundred square feet. And we do have some lots that will, will hold, will, you know, will be, have free car garage, um, capability, which we wanna make sure we do have that in the community. And then we will provide the, we will have some range product that will be offered as well. There's always a, some level of demand for that product, so, um, these are pretty popular. Not to get off topic, but we're building a bunch of these at the new Delaware community that, um, is not far from here, so basically it'll be the same home. So that's really all I have to offer in terms of my comments related to the architecture. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have, um, whether it's now or, or waiting, but we'll defer to you.
So since you guys are kind of going together at the same time, are you comfortable with us holding questions and kind of asking on both part of pieces at the same time?
Yeah, we're all right here.
All right. Does anyone have any questions specifically for Pulte though, uh, while we're here? I, I'm gonna reserve mine at least for whole package, but if anyone has some questions here, it'd be appropriate.
The three, go ahead.
I, I was just kind of, like, especially that long frontage, I feel like sometimes it's like the rough lines where, you know, the variety of houses, like getting mixed in and a little bit of the curvature. I think, you know, with the landscape, that kind of helps break that, like, just steady state of the houses. So, you know, as you, like, integrate, yeah, like, look at that solid, you know, that rough line at the same time as you go through.
Yeah, I, and we, you know, actually the homes are, I, I mean, we, we will definitely wanna make sure that we're heavily landscaping and mounting that back area. You know, we, we have a diversity standard in terms of not building the same house on, you know, and there has to be a diversity standard in terms of mixing models, um, and elevations. That's more impactful on the front of the home, but it certainly does change the back of the home as well, building different models, but understand.
The three models, one was forty-five feet wide. What's the other two? I didn't catch what the width, the width of those, the other, the other two stand.
Both series are forty feet wide. Um, obviously with the free car garage, you get the fifty feet. Those, the two, um, ranches are, they're forty feet as well.
One other question specifically for.
I guess I'll just want to still just go through this. I think. P U D code, some calculations are all coming up with gross first year net densities to come up with that. A little heavier than what our code currently is to come back and look at that density bonus. That, that kind of increase on density bonus, meaning that would, like, the number of sites that would work for what that current plan is. But just, you know, I think looking at, at those numbers, just, you know.
Okay, will do. I do wanna say we, we have met with Beechey Farms, um, to show them the plan, um, make sure that they were comfortable with the lots we had backing up to their lots. And there is, as Gary mentioned, there is some separation along the property line, but we had a good meeting and, um, um, seemed to be on the same page. And we've committed to continuing to, to work together on this going forward. Thank you.
I think it's, I think they're referring to you. I don't think Siri's talking about a meeting.
I, I did that on purpose, just for the meeting really.
Well timed.
Google doesn't trust me either. Yeah, so, um, you know, one of the interesting things about, uh, kind of what we're doing here, especially with both, um, with both of these sites, and, and we're gonna talk through the Arbor Homes site, is the two builders, uh, kind of have a uniquely different mission. The, um, the Arbor Homes folks, and I'm gonna let them talk about this, but they are very heavily focused on, um, providing, uh, housing that's attainable to, um, you know, average, everyday people. We always, we know that the price of housing is just skyrocketing. Um, and they're really focused on creating quality housing at a lower price point for different folks. So you're gonna see some different options here than what we've talked about on the Pulte site. And the reason that's important, uh, and the reason why these two things work so well together, uh, is because the two developments, even coming online at the same time, won't really cannibalize from, from one another. Because, you know, one of them, uh, the Pulte side is gonna attract, and, you know, um, a buyer looking kind of for a higher price point. And, you know, the folks coming in on the Arbor side, uh, are gonna be looking for, uh, you know, quality housing that, you know, maybe is a little bit more attainable. So, um, and I don't, I don't use that kind of in a negative sense. They do build a nice product. If, if you've been out to, um, you know, Mayor Reserve, you know, you've seen Arbor's product and what they build, and, you know, they're building a great, uh, project out there. So I'm gonna let them go through a little bit more about their mission. I wanna talk a little bit about the site plan. So this site's, it, it gets shaped a little bit differently. Um, this site doesn't have near the amount of frontage. Uh, it's also a little bit of a smaller site. Um, this is fifty, I'm gonna put my glasses back on, fifty-nine, so it's about sixty acres. Um, and this is gonna be kind of in, in between the existing development here, um, and, uh, what is gonna be the Pulte site. The site itself, again, it's just, it's all open. Um, there's really nothing there. There's no existing tree stands. Um, there's really no wetlands. It's, it's pretty much all open farm field. The, uh, Google Earth did a nice job getting two different color photos together for us, and so one side looks green, the other side looks, looks brown. Uh, so I would imagine that those were, uh, taken at different times, but, um, the, uh, it's all pretty much open farm field. Um, so the site plan, and, and this is gonna be a mix of two different products, and so Arbor's got several different series, and a lot of builders do. Um, one of them is called their Arbor Series, and, um, that is kind of the standard, uh, fifty-foot lot. And then they've got an Arrival Series, which is intended really to be kind of a more attainable product, uh, and that is a, a forty-foot lot. Or, yeah. Yep, so it's, um, there's, there's two different products on this site, um, kind of organized in the way, uh, the way we're showing here. So what we're trying to do here ultimately is, um, one, provide, you know, some buffer and some landscaping, so that you can see there on the wet, on the east side, where we butt up against the existing neighborhood, we're holding off some landscape space. And then we're, we're buffering that community again with a product that is more similar in size and, uh, housing type, uh, to what we, what, what we have next door. So we're trying to create a little bit of a transition there between products. And then we go to kind of the Arrival Series really in the center. And kind of also the advantage of working, uh, with two different builders at the same time, is we can kind of combine, I don't know if you remember from the other site plan, we can kind of combine to have a wider separation between the two projects. So on the Pulte project, on the west side, or on the east side, you know, we held off that landscape buffer. And then on the east side here, we're holding off a landscape buffer, so we have a wider kind of landscape strip, um, that will be, you know, kind of doing a shared landscape buffer, uh, along that strip between the two projects. So, um, that primarily is the site plan. Now, this is, uh, it's a little bit higher density, and I'm gonna let Drew talk about this a little bit. This is important to the affordability aspect of the community. You know, as you guys know, um, housing, what goes into the price of housing is a lot of different things. It's the cost of buying the land, um, it's the cost of, you know, extending the sewer and running the utilities through the property, it's the cost of streets. Um, all of those things kind of go into ultimately what wraps into the price of the house. It's not just the construction of the house. And so when you want to get houses that are more affordable, you only have a couple of options. You can really cheap out on the architecture, and that's not the goal, right? We're, we're trying to build nicer houses, but do it at a price point that people can afford. And so the only way that you can really do that is spread out all of those costs of site development around, but amongst more houses, right? The more you can share that cost, the more that you can split that cost, the more you can reduce the cost for each individual house. So that's the concept. That's why the density here is a little bit more important. We are, we are higher density. Um, this is, uh, about four units an acre, but again, understand calculations of the density, we'll have to correct that, uh, as we come back in for zoning. Um, but, uh, you know, we've got two hundred and thirty-four houses on essentially fifty-nine, uh, point six, uh, gross acres here. Um, and so we've got a, in a mix of those two products, we've got a fifty-four foot lot and a forty-four foot lot. And we've got, uh, about thirty-eight, uh, percent open space, about twenty-eight point eight percent open space, uh, within the development. I'm gonna just, uh, have Drew come up, talk a little bit about their mission and kind of the architecture and what they would envision building here. Um, and, and then we'll, we can just take questions on the development.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Drew Miller. I'm with Arbor Homes. Uh, Gary did a really good job of explaining a little bit about who we are, and I just wanna touch on a couple of those things. So really at Arbor Homes, our mission is to put as many people in homes as possible, especially those who didn't think that they could afford to. And so we really live that mission every day. We started in Indianapolis in nineteen ninety-one with that mission, and it's been the same ever since. In Indianapolis, we're one of the largest home builders. About five years ago, we expanded outside of Indianapolis, and we opened up offices in Louisville, Cincinnati, Dayton Market in central Ohio here. And so, um, like Gary mentioned, I, I hope you are all familiar with our Mariner Reserve project. Uh, we're really proud of that. Um, we even have some, uh, one of our employees who, uh, lives out there, so just a testament to the neighborhoods that we built. As Gary mentioned, we do have, uh, two different products that we're gonna be proposing in this neighborhood. Um, the traditional Arbor, uh, product is what you're seeing right here, so there was fourteen different floor plans that we offer with this, uh, traditional Arbor. They range in, uh, square feet from twelve hundred to about thirty-two hundred square feet.
Are these similar to what the Mariners are too, or delivered?
Yeah, so this is exactly what we're selling at Mariners.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the ways that we control, or we help people afford a home is, uh, we let them decide on a lot of the options. So, um, even though we pride ourselves on being, you know, an attainable house and, and retarded first-time home buyers, there's a lot of options. And so it can really feel like a custom home buying experience, because we let them really put in what they want and what they can afford into the house. And so, um, what you're seeing here is a few different options, uh, for elevations, but we have a huge selection of different material types that, um, home buyers can choose from.
And with these slab, crawl space, basement.
We start with a slab, and then if a customer wants a basement, we can take those. It's just one of those things that if, uh, we won't do that unless the customer is asking for that. Just keep that price low. So with this traditional Arbor product, we'd be targeting about mid-three hundreds starting price. Um, one thing that we've noticed, um, that customers, when they choose those different material options and upgrades, um, they're usually spending about ten thousand dollars additional on top of that base price that we set, that we offer that.
Well, he's talking, one of the things that you want, I think it's important to note, and I keep mentioning again, but, uh, even though they are focused on, you know, providing housing that's more tangible, what you'll notice as you look through all of these is you're still not giving up, uh, architectural quality over that. Uh, you still have a wide variety of elevations. Uh, we're not giving up architectural diversity. So it's still not gonna feel like a community that's just row after row of the same houses, uh, because they do all, there's so many different exterior elevations. It's gonna feel like a community of, you know, even though you have a number of footprints, it's still gonna feel like a community of a lot of different, uh, homes. So the buyers do have a lot of options. On the basement side, I think, um, I think Drew or Jim can confirm this, but I've heard that the basement actually adds thirty to forty thousand dollars to the price of a home. And so it is an option that people are offering now. Do you want a basement? Do you want one basement? Is that important to you? And sometimes we let allow the buyer to make that choice, um, can make the difference between them actually being able to get into a home that they can afford or not.
You know what percent of basement you're seeing it, Mary?
Um, I don't know. I think right now it's about thirty-five percent.
Our, our basement.
Yes. Which is higher than most communities that we've had years.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, I'm gonna share these Arrival, uh, floor plans and elevations with you also. I just wanted to let you know a little bit about Arrival and how we ended up, you know, creating this product. It was really like late two thousand teens, I think I wanna say like two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, where we noticed that it was really hard for us to achieve our mission and, and to help first-time home buyers afford a home. And so, and, and there was a lot of factors involved in that, you know, a lot of it was construction and material costs, and this is before COVID. And so when COVID happened, that kind of exacerbated everything, and we had to come up with a new product, something that we could really knock that starting price down so we could really achieve our mission of helping those first-time home buyers afford a home. And so we came up with this Arrival product, and, um, we're really proud of it, because it, I haven't really seen much other home builders doing something like this. It's, um, just some of the ways that we achieve that really low starting price is all these Arrival houses, like we're showing here, is forty-foot wide lots. All of them are thirty-foot paths. And so we can achieve a little bit of economy of scale. When we go out and start building these, we'll build them in clusters. And so that's just one way we're saving. Um, there's a lot of other ways that we, um, are vertically integrated in our company to help get, get that price point as low as possible to really help home, home buyers afford that first, first home. So, um, we have four different floor plans that we offer here. You'll notice that a lot of these have several different elevations, and part of the reason for that is we understand that there's only four floor plans, but with the range of options of elevation, um, we're still, you're not, you're not feeling like you're going through that neighborhood and seeing kind of like a tippy cutter. And so we institute the same kind of policy where our sales team will make sure that we're not selling like the same elevation, you know, within a certain distance of, of the same home. So you're not getting that redundant feel when you're going through these neighborhoods. These all, um, as far as the buying process, it's, it's very similar, almost the same as our traditional Arbor product. And so people are gonna still have those same options. They're coming in, it's gonna feel like a custom home, because they get to choose all those options.
Does that one has?
Yes, it does, the, the squat stone.
What's the patient height?
I think 34 and a half, or it's just below 35, which is pretty common limit. So these range in square feet from 1,200 to about 2,200 square feet. We are currently selling these in a neighborhood in Martinsville, Indiana. It's called Hannah Farms. I wanted to get a trip out there last week. I wasn't able to make time for it, but that neighborhood's really starting to get built out. So we're going to get some good photos of what that neighborhood looks like. So next time we're here in front of you, can share those photos and you can see something other than a rendering here. Yep, so that's the end of it here.
All right. Questions for Arbor Homes specifically, as opposed to kind of the whole project? Or we can just move into a whole project conversation if anyone has a question?
All the slabs are 30-foot wide? That's what you, that's the basement?
The slabs are 30-foot? Yeah. And so for this arrival product, I think we're proposing 44 feet for the seven-foot setbacks on each side. So I guess in reality, if you look at a 30-foot wide house with a seven-foot setback on each side, it's actually going to feel a little bit more spacious than you would with some of the other homes that we're proposing here, which are 50-foot wide with that same seven and a half foot. So you've just got to kind of understand the scale there a little bit.
One of, one of the ways that I, one of the ways that I kind of think about the arrival product is, one of the ways people are kind of solving the affordability right now, I should say. One of the ways that people are solving the affordability issue is townhomes these days, right? And, you know, townhomes range in width from like 30 feet to, I'm sorry, 20 feet to like 28 feet generally. And what they've done here is essentially created something that's, you know, a little wider and a little bit more livable than a townhome, but sells at nearly a similar price and doesn't have shared walls. And that's one of the reasons why they're seeing such interest in this product, because you get in kind of at a townhome price, but still have a house and a yard to yourself that you can fence off. You know, you can have a dog in the backyard, those kind of things. Your kids can go out and play in the backyard. And, you know, actually, you can still own your space like townhomes, but you don't have to share a wall with a neighbor. You know, you don't have to hear your neighbors, you don't have an argument, those kind of things. So they are kind of a really attractive option for people who are in that price range, you know, trying to get in a home.
The pressure range is mid-200s?
Yes, for the arrival product.
Yes. Mid-200s. How's the market walking on it? And is the sales?
Yeah.
Are you selling them quicker than you're building them?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We, we reach out to our Indianapolis office about every month and ask them how it's selling. And yeah, it's selling up quicker than we can go on.
Gary made a good point. I've been fortunate enough to be at Arbor since we started researching, you know, how do we get back down to that first-time home buyer? And the research was coming back as, you know, townhomes were one of the options that we looked at because that's how you maximize the density. But as we got into it, the research really said, okay, we don't want shared walls. We don't want, we want to have a backyard, and we want to have a garage. And so the best way to do that is to kind of compromise. Yeah, we lose a little bit of density by not doing an attached product, but we're giving people that a true first-time home, not an attached product where they're sharing walls and listening to the neighborhood play.
And that's, that's not to knock townhomes because they certainly, you know, have a place in every community.
It, it does seem as if the vast majority going up, instead of first-time home buyers, you see a lot of apartments or condos, or they're kind of skipping that step. So that part, I, I do, it's attractive to me on some level. Not having shared walls, a different type product. I think, and I, and I don't, I don't, I want this to come off exactly how it's going to come off. There's something underwhelming about these plans when I look at them. So the green space is very unusable. It's, it's retention ponds. It's, it's a sliver down the middle. It's a push towards this right here. It's not centralized. It's not a park in the middle like in Madison Meadows. There, and when you talk about both projects together, where is that wow factor? Or what makes it special for Plain City? And, and, you know, think about that as my feedback, as just of where is the, like, I get it. Density is a trade-off for affordability. We need to have different variety. We, we don't want to have everything be a $500,000 house. So I do like that you guys are working together on having different levels, but there's, I, I, there's, I don't know how to articulate it exactly, but like, it's retention pond, retention pond. It's laying out there with broad retention pond. Sure, you meet the green space requirements, but how do I put the kids out there actually playing in this green space? How do I get the kids walking and biking through this area? How do I connect the two? So I would love to see you guys think that way, think about that, think about how we could be creative in maybe a centralized park or centralized gathering space or something of that nature. And then the other one, love the idea of no one backing up to other people's houses. But again, backing up to not necessarily these big, not these usable green spaces. So that would be my feedback. I, I get the variety. I get the density. I get everything. I love the idea of not doing townhomes, not doing this apartments, balancing those. Just, I, I want something that like makes me sit back and go, wow, that's really cool. That's really unique. That's really a nice feature for Plain City that we can say to our residents that we're trying to do what's best for them and everything. So I, I don't, I don't have the idea. I just have the, I'm a problem finder, not the problem solver.
Not the problem solver. No, that's, that's, well, and that's what, I guess that's why they hire me is to help solve those problems. And I, I will say, you know, Derek and I have had, we've had some conversations about that after our presentation at Planning Commission because we got some pretty similar feedback. And that, those are things that we're kind of definitely talking about. We wanted to make sure that we came here and got your feedback as well. We know that we've probably got some changes that we need to make before we bring these back to you. And so that is, that is part of, you know, some of the things that we're looking at right now. So how do we, how do we create a little bit more interest in here and still achieve the goals, you know, of both communities ultimately? And maybe, you know, to tie everything together a little bit better.
Yeah, imagine these houses will be a lot of like young couples, right? Probably starting out families. So there's probably a lot of kids.
I would imagine so, yeah.
And, you know, where would they, yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's just, I mean, it's like my wife and I, when we started our family, I mean, our first house was just a small, you know, 1,200 square foot split level, and we felt like kings, you know? We were, we were finally in homeownership, you know, we were starting our family, and people need places to do that.
But, but to that, to counter that point, my first home was a freestanding condo, no shared walls, kind of similar to the arrival product of Hilliard. But we have a centralized playground, centralized park area that we had. So yes, they were, the yards were small, freestanding condo for sure. But there was still a central gathering space that all the kids could go. They weren't running across the street constantly, you know? So I think both things are achievable. Again, I, I, I want to be clear that this is a preliminary. I'm just trying to give feedback. And, you know, so yes, that, and that's a very, you know, that was a very first-time home buyer situation. Slab property, everything, a lot of similar to the arrival property. And I want to be clear, this, this statement is not just on the arrival property. It's actually on the, that's why I kind of held. It's actually on both properties. If I look at the Polte, yes, there are lots, yes, there are, same critique exists. And since you guys are working kind of hand-in-hand, and I get it, they're two different developers, you probably have the opportunity to blend these things together and find a better solution that kind of works better to blend all that together. So yes, they are separate projects. I'm thinking of it. Think of my critique as similar for both. It's not on one of the others.
I would just like to say that, I mean, agree. The number one amenity that our buyers want are the paths and, and usable open space. So, you know, we agree that we have some work to do. And we didn't get that far in terms of building that out, but we definitely will.
That's why we do.
First, um, stuff like also back into our zoning tax, the open space, like that's how that space does count for space. So there needs to be, be certain, but like, it's like a pond that counts open space, especially like.
We do have some paths, and it doesn't kind of show up as well. We are connecting up, and I probably should have highlighted it.
Drop down your, like, your account, so you try to minimum open space, and that's not accounted for.
Right.
I completely understand the trade-off. You want density, that brings the price down. There, I think there's a balance in here.
Yeah.
Like, you know, I think like be, be creative with it. Like, that's, that's why, because I was. But like, the idea was like, was in there to encourage, you know, some more creative stuff with the properties.
Yeah, and I, and I think the, I think the open space, I think you're right. I think that's where we need to work a little bit more on the creative side. We did, we, we did try to pull some amenities in this even with the density. And I didn't actually highlight this, and I probably should have. But if you look at the, if you look at the plan, we actually have paths that connect up to the adjacent neighborhood that go around the pond, and then that connects down through the open space, down through this open space, down through this open space, and then over to these ponds as well, you know, some potential amenities here. So we did, we did think about that a little bit, but I would agree, we probably do need to look at how we can configure the open space in a little bit more advantageous way.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, I, I don't like that. I mean, it just, I can tell you, everybody up to here will be here. They'll be asking for more houses and more stuff. I mean, I, I, every council meeting, every planning and zoning you go to, you know, the people are, the residents here, like, they're. And the builders, you guys are promoting. You, you pay, come out, you know, it becomes, and we start doing these products, and I, yeah. I never went to an apartment, I was like, you know, we worked out, it's small, and something similar, but, you know.
It was Columbus tax, it was outside, and it was like, the kids want to be a better school district. And so, you know, we have to school this, people want to come here.
You know, so, and where locations come, we may not be, I don't know if there's a need for it. I don't know if there's any, you know, whatever the numbers on this one. And if we balance out with some of our other houses, townhomes and apartments, I don't know. Still, you know, I don't know if that's, you know, part of the, out here.
I hear that. You know, we, we believe very strongly, Arbor believes very strongly in this product. They've sold me on it as well. I, I see just, I see a tremendous need all over the place for this just because of what's happening in the housing market. And a lot of the people that are just priced out of it for a lot of ways. And so, you know, it is, in a lot of ways, it's a passion project, but I, I do understand these are difficult projects to do in a lot of cases because they do involve density. And that, that freaks a lot of people out. And I think for us, what we, we need to do is find a better way to incorporate some amenities in this that, that make it feel a little better. And, you know, we can, then we can really have a much better discussion about it.
With our policies that we have, homes are supposed to be offset between each home 15 feet. Am I not, am I correct on that? I thought that's what we had. I thought that's what we passed.
I think 14 feet. I think it's like.
I thought it was 10 feet on one side, five on the other. It was 15 now.
I think it's five, but that the other one has to be, would be about.
Would have to be.
Yeah.
Because some of these lots are pretty skinny, pretty small for what I'm looking at. I mean, if you put a 52-foot lot, you put a 40-foot house, you only have six feet on either side. You have 12 feet. If you put those houses side by side, you're not getting the 14 feet that we have as a minimum. I think.
Were you saying that?
With the Polte homes, 52-foot lot, that's what they said, was a smaller lot. And you put a 42, 40-foot house, building on it, that's what they said their size, that's 12 feet. But if you put them side by side, you can't get your 14.
So we need to get to that seven to the side yard range, is what you're saying.
I thought for sure it was 15. I thought it was 10 and 5.
14 in total. But the arrival series hits that 14, or?
Yeah.
30 foot, 30 foot.
Arrival gets right at it.
It's at it.
If they, if they're 40, if they have a 44-foot lot and they go, they're right at it with that. But.
We'll meet that.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Again, and then you said, I mean, you have a three-car garage on a 50-foot, even if you're on a 60-foot lot, you're not getting that. You're not even getting close to be having a three-foot, a three-car garage. You said it was 50-foot wide. Even with a 60-foot lot, you're not getting that. And so you're going to have to make some adjustments if you're going to get to that point for us to be able to. Again, the density for me is, I look at this and there's a lot of homes in, in not enough green space for me to see what, what this community would like, I think.
And, and I know I went in to wait till everybody, during planning, I had mentioned, well, the density of the arrival product was a lot. But I, as you're driving into this neighborhood, I know it's a unique shape, but I'd like to see those homes that are along the entrance almost flipped. So that way you don't really have people on the entrance with that many homes. I can just get bottlenecked.
Yeah.
Right here.
The, the first, the entryway.
So if you have your, if people are trying to pull out their driveway, and then you have people coming in, I know it's like that on a street, but if that's like the main entrance. I would, I would almost maybe like and keep it continually coming around and then like.
Just kind of get rid of that row of yellow. Is that what you're thinking?
I don't have house.
No.
Yeah, a lot.
Like if you have that many homes.
Exit point, yeah.
Yes. Yes. If people are having kids playing in their front yard and like, and you have a lot of cars coming in and out.
I got almost more like a four, it's really like W.
Yeah.
Just stripping in.
Mm-hmm.
Other comments or feedback?
Just one is, and nothing with the houses, more of just this, this would be the broader one. As you designed, like you said, you guys are kind of unique, working together. Think about two, the Beechey Farms being connected. Beechey Farms has some houses. And, and I'm just thinking how probably Google Maps would take her if I'm going to do it with all the connections. Especially so it could develop 42, Converse Huff, and I know that will probably be the intersection is horrible, so there's more stuff goes in there. People are probably to cut through neighborhoods. And so, you know, coming in either on this one or Polte, and then, you know, there's a lot of, going to be some apartments, townhomes. Probably people going towards Columbus, Dublin, or Hilliard, so intersections may be cutting through. So just trying to road arrangement to, you know, not make it very advantageous or, or having long speedways, you know, for people. Because I, I will say the, the 20-something things are probably are not going to be as considerate as the, you know, the 40-something things with little kids cutting through. And maybe the, the 40-somethings may be the worst to cut through.
That's always the hard part, you know, because when you're talking about kind of just overall planning and connectivity, I mean, the whole point of doing that is so that you can distribute traffic, so you don't force everybody out in one entrance. But also, if you live in a neighborhood, you don't want people cutting through. It kind of flies in the face of what you're trying to do by making sure that you have these cross-connection points. So I, I take it, you know, I, I think your point's well taken. You know, we try to arrange those connections so that we just don't have one fluid out, you know, from one area to the next that, you know, we can create at least a little bit more circuitous route for people. So if, I mean, if there is a bottleneck, people need to be able to get out. And fire departments need to be able to get in, but we don't want to make it, like you said, necessarily advantageous.
Yeah, just kind of on that north end, I forget if it's like a, you know, and when they're combined, if it's a straight shot for, you know, a half mile or three-quarters miles, like having some, some bends in there just.
Right.
Have kind of some natural.
Have kind of some natural, you know, slowdowns in.
We, we want to slow traffic down. This came up at the planning commission meeting and then, you know, based on the shape of our property. We have some limitations, but at the same time, we need to slow traffic down in our neighborhood for for the people who live there.
Yeah.
So we will have, we will look at that.
What's our current minimum width, lot width in our plan?
We have as a minimum offsets is what we have.
An offset density.
For example, if those are, if the arrivals were condos or townhomes, potentially use seven thirty or.
Yeah, that's that's the challenge. It's it's kind of getting penalized a little bit for trying to separate the units. Rather than attaching them and creating, you know, a similar affordability. So we're, we're trying to figure that out. It is, you know, admittedly, it's it's not the easiest thing to do in every community, but it's something that's needed in a lot of communities. The affordability crisis really hits everywhere. You you have a lot of people in this community, they're, you know, they're teachers, firemen. You know, I could go through all of the normal ones we named. You know, they they need, they need a house, they need to build equity just like everybody else. It's it's the, it's the quickest way for people to, you know, a prosperous middle-class life. And that's really the mission, is trying to figure out a way to do that and do it with, you know, respect and dignity and, you know, give people still a nice quality home, you know, the price that they can afford. So I don't want to belabor that. You you guys understand this. You've probably talked about it amongst yourselves a lot of times as well, too. So we'll definitely go back, we'll take a look at these things. You know, we've got a lot of good feedback from the planning commission, we've got a lot of, you know, good feedback from you guys as well. We'll make sure that we update these and come back with something that gets a lot closer to, I think, what you guys talked about.
Awesome. Other questions? All right. Thank you guys very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody's time this evening. I hope you guys didn't want to.
No, and and thank you for us being able to push back with our homecoming parade.
Is that what it was? We were wondering.
That's why the mayor's got her shirt on.
I, when I first got the email, I assumed that you guys were having an event here.
No, no, homecoming parade.
Well, that's why the mayor ran in late, because she was probably at the homecoming parade.
Just, yes, being present and, yeah, cheering on our school this year.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Small town pride at its best.
Yeah. Zoning code update.
Evening, everyone. We're here tonight. Tonight, we're talking about architectural design standards. Now, this is for tonight, portion is for commercial and multifamily. So we talked about this a little while ago. We've been kind of behind the scenes working. A lot of new commercial that's going to be starting here in the next couple of years, so let's let's get these standards in place so we could have some good quality stuff coming out there. So I have in front of you a draft. This will be going in front of Planning and Zoning and it's, my gosh, it's October already. What are you, what are you meeting on this?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Uh, so this will be going through P and Z on the fifteenth. So why we need design standards, we've talked a little bit, and you know, this this is a way for us to create, you know, enhance our character. Use require more durable materials, better high-quality materials on our buildings. It supports economic vitality, improves quality of life, on and on. You know, most of our, most of our development, commercial development will be primarily on our corridors. So these are going to be businesses and it's going to be structures I want to see every day. It's going to be the primary focus. Like anybody comes through or in our town, it's going to be seen. So. Take a look, you know, these are pretty, pretty general as far as just the minimum requirements. We don't have minimum requirements now, so this is a big step from what we currently obviously don't have. These would be required to be submitted as part of their site plan, so so if a new business comes in, they have to come in front of Planning and Zoning for a major site plan. They would also have to submit their architectural design standards. So we'd be looking at that, making sure that the quality, that the material samples, colors, elevations, the whole nine yards. So we know exactly what we're going to get when it's built. These are, these are similar. There are other communities that have these, so this isn't something new. It is tailored a little bit different just for us. But it is fairly straightforward, fairly fairly simple. But this was going, these, these specific ones will be for commercial. Any type of commercial, industrial, institutional and in multifamily dwellings.
I know we talked about this with housing at one point, and I think we have it, like a design guide, like visual that will be associated with this.
Yeah, so we have, we have that design guide now, that that reference guide, so it will accommodate that, so it will.
Gives a little more key to the picture.
Yeah. And I did, I did have some, so just for example, these are just examples. Some of these are are not real properties, some of these are existing real properties. But these are materials that are considered higher, higher quality. These are, you're not going to see, you're not going to see vinyl siding. You'll see vinyl siding possibly as an accent, which is, has to be a small percentage.
Thirty percent, yeah.
But these are going to be mostly stucco, you're going to have metal seamless front edges, concrete, textured concrete. You'll have hardy board, stone, brick, obviously. And they'll all stay in that character, that kind of that rural character that we're looking for, that farm, kind of farmhouse style. It also gives us a little more detail on roof, roof outlines and roof materials that we don't have right now. So the conversation that I really would like to have with you tonight, that is not in this draft, but it can be added to it, is. How to deal with existing properties? At what point do those existing properties have to come into compliance? It is common, it's, most time it's a percentage. They have to say if they do renovation or do an incomplete exterior review. If they were doing more than forty percent or fifty percent, that's the kind of conversation I need to have with you guys to see where where you're thinking. If they do an addition or they build something new, it's got to, it'll have to fall right into these new guidelines. But we have a lot of existing structures that obviously don't meet these standards. So at what point do those have to come into compliance? I don't think we're, this is going out there and with nothing wrong with their building making them do this, but if they are coming in and they're wanting to do a remodel, they're wanting to do re-siding or something. This, this would be when they'll be kicked into this new category.
Yeah, so one of the prohibitive materials is a CME block. So let's say the, the, the car wash across the street over here, that's CME block. They try and add on another bay. We're going to make them upgrade everything?
No, they have new bay, the new bay would have to, would have to.
I guess, I mean, I was giving examples. We don't understand what's going on there. So that's what would happen.
Yeah, now, if they came in and say they were going to tear that fascia off, that facade off, then they would have to replace that at that time.
Well, that's not facade. I mean, that's, there's a building structure. They would tear that down, change the whole structure down. I mean, I don't think that's the intent that we want people to tear their building down.
No, 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 no. So, no, that's an example. So let's say we have a business that's all vinyl siding and they want to come in and redo their whole building. They would not be able to do vinyl siding.
So interesting, so I I just drove, begun through like, like ahead on the Albany area, but they must have gone through this and they have a mix match, right? Of grandfather buildings in and current that are meeting a higher design or technical, it's clear that you could kind of see it as you're driving through. And it, there's actually some like, it's it's actually not terrible. Like it actually adds some like variety. Because instead of just having a bunch of brick, like you do have these other things. So I think the suggestions sound right, where like new addition structures, of course. And then at some percentage, like fifty, forty percent or whatever, because it it added some character, like especially like in there, like kind of more like. Drag areas, you would have this kind of broken up thing where instead of just everything looking the same. So, because I was actually thinking about it as I was driving through. So to be honest with you, I I don't have strong feelings about percentages or anything of that nature. I think I'm I'm open to your suggestions. I think a certain percentage sounds good. I I certainly don't think we should go in and be like, everyone has to change. Like, I think there, I think there's some merit to having some of the. Kind of character from when it was built, not to get back to the old codes, but like of its time and things like that. So I I'm okay with whatever. So I don't have, I don't really, I'm not educated enough to have strong feelings on this.
And we are talking about facade, right? I mean, where the car wash, I mean, it is bays of of brick, but the facade. Is. Well, the facade is more or less the elevation, it's the front. So that building is, that particular structure is is blocked. So, I mean, there's, they have to replace block for block. But most, most properties are not like that. Most structures aren't like that. So if we have a structure that's vinyl, we have a structure that's, you know, good old fashioned metal with screws in it, fasteners, that's all that would have to be replaced.
Play the, play the bowling out, right, the lanes, right? Like, I'm not asking them to like change what they are or anything like that, like. And as things go up around that, I think it'll be an interesting character piece that has, this is more traditional and. So like, if they did a mass renovation, they'd probably do a facelift and we'd follow them under this. But just day to day, as the thing grows up around it, I I don't know if it's a terrible thing. I I want to.
Any kind of standard related to the percentages, like what are, what are other communities doing?
Yeah, so there is a percentage. I mean, seventy, thirty is is pretty common. I've seen it stricter, I've seen it less. You know, we do leave a a little room in here for if, you know, if say it's, they're proposing something that's not on this list, if they could, you know, prove that it is more durable and just as durable as something else, then that's going to be an exception that we could make. Planning and zoning with the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I think the exceptions were by Planning and Zoning Commission only.
Your question on the remodel percentage?
Waiver.
Yeah, my question.
Remodel percentage.
So, oh yeah, so yeah, forty is pretty common. Forty, yeah. But it it doesn't have to be that. So one, another caveat, though, on that percentage is, which I haven't seen in a lot of communities, but. God forbid there's a fire or there's a tornado comes through. Most insurance are going to cover what those properties were worth, those materials. At that point, they would then, are we, are we going to have them, you know, is there going to be an exception for those natural disasters type things where we would not necessarily?
I think, I think. God forbid, I think that that is what the waivers are for in the Planning and Zoning Commission. That that's where it would be appropriate to take something. I don't want to write a code to be for the exception. I'd rather write the code and say, hey, there is something like that that happened, forget the Planning and Zoning. We have a commission for that. They would, I'm sure, weigh the merits of. Houses and everything like that, so.
I think forty percent is a, a valid number to follow because, you know, it's, that way, it's a little bit, it's just almost a half changing, but.
Let's say, let's stop and be like, okay, we're forty percent. Okay. We're going to do forty percent. All right. Forty percent. Like, I mean, you know what I mean? Like, it's like, okay, I like, okay, we're going to, you know, this side of the building, all right, then then the next, like.
What you. What you'll find, and and, you know, this particular thing isn't, isn't new, you know, the. These type of designs, they may have been called something differently back then, but there always has been this type of thing in zoning, not necessarily here, but what you'll find is as properties, it's the domino effect. As properties rehab and redo and as properties, brand new properties are built, you're just going to naturally see those other properties wanting, you know, to be presentable and look and attract business just like those other businesses do. So you'll, so you'll naturally, you'll naturally see, not all, but you'll see a large percentage of them just naturally over time start doing that, just come in.
And this would apply to everything but the Uptown, is it?
Yeah, so Uptown has its own specific set of standards, so it would not affect that. So it's, you know, everything outside of that. And like I said, everything will still come in front of P and Z, this will just be part of their review process.
Then then with, with a lot of the properties being like the PUDs, I don't want them to kind of have their own design standards. So is this a more compliment?
So what I would be looking for moving forward when developers come in for those PUDs, this is going to be their standard. This will be their minimum standard, will be this. So let's just say we have approved some commercials obviously since, you know, prior to this. A lot of those, they listed materials that are very close to this. What they didn't list, this is, this is what defaults, this is the default. So I'm not, I'm not concerned with what we have approved. They are already pretty close to what these standards were.
Do we have any commercial properties like in the queue right now or just kind of some hearsay stuff?
No, yeah, so probably, honestly, because of the water and sewer, the only thing, the only commercial that could be built, the soonest would be the first half of the spot when they get back. So that road will be start, you'll see construction on the Shell station, which is the first part of the expansion for the Shell. You'll see that still this year. You'll see the entry of the road to take form this year. So sometime next year, we'll probably see the first builds. They don't have the tendency yet. They have a lot of interest. There's a lot of interest everywhere right now for commercials. So those will be our first builds likely.
You could also potentially have the Alcatz line, if it's on the road.
Yes, yeah, there'll be, yeah, it won't be an S F big developer, but there could be individual business there.
And the outdoor effects.
Yeah, I was just going to bring up the outdoor effects. I mean, what they were looking for is those warehouses. They typically, the first three or four feet are going to be CME block or a concrete wall. Now they'd have to be a concrete wall. Because the CME wouldn't be able to be used. They use that because it's quick and easy to put up, but they wouldn't be able to use that. Or they'd have to put a facade in front of it.
Yeah, and and that one. Yeah, and that one, that one was specific. I'm pretty sure that one was specific on the building and there's text. So if their text stated what it was and was proved, that's what they could build.
Is this, is this spot or capacity previous or or future coming capacity?
It has, it has capacity for some now.
Some?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it depends on the users. You know, if they get one, a large water user in there, that might be, it might just be the one for now.
Yeah.
It depends on what they're getting there. For me, I mean, I've, I think I've known, you know, I've been trying to push for getting these, this design standard into our code to start doing this. And, I mean, I'm, you know, I don't want to have approvals until this becomes code. I guess I'll just make. I would motion have more for. Standard becomes code.
So a question, since this is a zone code, would this end up having a public hearing and?
Yeah, this wouldn't go into effect. It, maybe after, maybe the first of the year, because it won't, it won't be in front of council for vote until end of December. Right, am I right on that, Justin?
It's got to be P and Z first, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And so what is coming down the pipeline that would potentially be held up or be held up if this would pass? What does the pipeline look like between now and the, we'll say mid-January, let's be safe?
And so there's only, we only have two more P and Z's after October. So any new build commercial has to come in front of them as for a, for a major site. And so I think it's very unlikely we're going to get any builds this year, just because there's no infrastructure there or or streets yet. So I don't think anything's going to be built this year.
Well.
For the spot.
It'll move, it's a spot, because I guess it'll move quicker then, so.
But.
If I could ask you a real question, I have to start to second, or if you have a certain right here, but I think there is one, you don't have really anything lined up that would be an approval. More and more I understand where you're heading with this, that sense of guaranteeing.
I would be hesitant for that.
I understand, we understand what that means, but the community will say, why are you stopping my businesses or why are you stopping whatever they can come up with? So just, I would recommend be very careful with that. I I don't think it's necessary, to be honest with you, but.
And I wouldn't recommend you do.
Modern ordinance.
I wouldn't do it by motion.
Okay.
You've got to, you've got to spell out what you're doing and why you're doing it and how long you're going to need to do to accomplish what you're trying to do rather than.
you're gonna need to do to accomplish what you're trying to do, rather just do it as a motion.
Outside that, those two areas there, there's not gonna be anything coming in front of us. We could, we could easily hold them off on.
That's what I was thinking, we can, on our end, we could, oh, we need to, you know, look at this a little more, we can review it a little more and wait till January comes through. I mean, yeah, it doesn't, I'm not saying that, but I mean, it's.
They want to be here, they'll, they'll wait.
We will not, we will not drag our feet on any sort of plan that is put in front of us. We will promptly and, as our process does, go through everything, that won't happen. Um, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second or like to?
That I will draw.
Withdraw the, thank you. Motion's withdrawn. Um, any other question on the zoning code update?
I would say the only thing just to ask, if you can just find, like, the, for, like, what if, just, if, forty is what I'm leaning for, so I mean, if everyone here was comfortable with the forty percent, that's, that's what I'm gonna put in there.
I don't see any major pushback, so. Um, okay, with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor? Awesome.